Two thousand twenty three. This meeting is being recorded, select board meeting.
Good evening and welcome to the town of Southwick Select Board Meeting for Monday, April third, two thousand twenty three. Those present, myself as Chairman Russell S. Fox, Vice Chairman Doug Moglen, or Jason Perron. Chief Chief Administrative Officer Carl J. Steinhardt on Zoom. Assistant C A O Nadine Signoni is present and Administrative Assistant Robin Solak is present. If we could begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing on the agenda is public comments. I'll begin with the people in the room first. I ask that you please state your name and address. Is there anyone here? I see a hand up. Go ahead, Pat.
Patrick Job thirty four year old, also a member of the school committee. Just found out with sad news that Kimberly Sasso. Who was a long time principal in our district, her husband passed away unexpectedly and suddenly early this morning. So I'd just like to offer. Condolences to the panel.
Alright, thank you.
Well, following that. Diane Gale five point probe wrote. The online access to public property tax records for Southwick has a print button. To print what is shown when you go query online. The information displayed, however, is not the complete property tax card information. In order to find properties that include features that are subject to the query you're looking for, you have to guess at what the hidden data is. You're forced to walk in and request multiple property cards that may or may not have the features you actually need, and then you have to pay for those copies. You can't even look at them first to decide if they're the ones you need because they have to print them so you can look at them. I inquired about having the full property tax card data. Be made available online rather than the abbreviated version. This way taxpayers have access to all that data without wasting time hunting and pecking and paying for useless copies. I was told no because it costs four hundred and fifty dollars to add another button. Well, I wonder how much annually is spent for the staff to retrieve, print, and account for the copies issued and paid for by taxpayers. Two buttons aren't needed, and I wasn't asking for two buttons. I'm requesting that this board then authorize an update to the G I S V G S I dot com site. To display the entire property card data like many other towns do. And link that to the current print button. This would be a twofold savings and improvement to the taxpayers. If it does cost anything additional, then I would ask you to consider that when you're doing your budget review and maybe shifting the line from four hundred and fifty dollars. If that's what it takes. And I would appreciate some information, some follow up, and this is what I'm talking about. The. Town of Concord, for instance. Has the red button that goes to the complete data or the abbreviated versions.
Does anyone else for public comments in this room? Does anyone on Zoom for public comment? I don't see anything. Okay. Then we'll go right into our agenda. Acknowledge payroll warrant number two, three, two, two dated three, twenty eight, twenty three. In amount of two hundred seventy two thousand, five hundred ninety four dollars and twenty nine cents. Acknowledge special payables warrant number two, three, two, five B. Dated three, twenty four, twenty three in the amount of ten thousand, four hundred thirty four dollars and sixty seven cents. I need a motion to accept the open session minutes dated three, twenty seven, twenty three.
Doug Moglen, so moved.
Jason Perron second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye. Could we pass down the executive session minutes dated three, twenty seven, twenty three? Need a motion?
Doug Moglen, so moved.
Jason Perron, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Yeah, some bad things, thank you. Alright, I need a motion to accept. The budget hearing minutes for three, eleven, twenty three, and three, twenty five, twenty three.
Doug Moglen, so moved.
Need a second?
Jason Perron, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Alright.
Just point of order, Mr. Chairman, I think attached to this is the capcom minutes. Those are approved by capcom and sent to you. Right, just so you have them. They were part of the minutes for that. Perfect, thank you.
Alright. Alright, the first thing is a letter here from the Southwood Fire Department. I see our fire chief here, so. Come on up, Rich.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I see that we are gonna be running short in our overtime. And we have, well, we have an option where we can request the finance committee reserve transfer. Or we can address it at the special town meeting prior to the annual town meeting. We've got your letter here, but if you want to give some details just so the public understands.
Certainly, so. I think there's several factors that have contributed to this. Most notably was the expansion of the career staff in the department, and a lot of that happened mid budget, but it was planned for. The overtime itself. Covered administrative requirements for training, which is contractual. Additional callback time, which is contractual as well. But we also had two administrative issues that were dealt with that both cost quite a bit in overtime. To cover people that were out of the department for some time. Looking back at the numbers that were allocated for overtime budget in the last couple of years. They've kept pace with the current department size, but I think that there's probably a little bit of an anomaly that's kind of hard to pinpoint exactly what it is. That with the additional staff, that number didn't move up proportionally. So the overtime budget itself, a little bit of a shortfall. One, we should have been a lot closer than we are right now, but those are the contributing factors. So with the current budget in place for the fire department, there are two areas that are concerned. One is overtime. The second would be the even base salaries themselves are projected to be over as well. So I've gone through the budget where I could. And locked down some spending. I don't want to say it's frozen because if there's an immediate need, it would need to be spent. But we've had areas where we can draw other funding from. Supplement some of the salary, and I've been working with the accounting department to make that happen as well as with Carl to make sure that we're. Balancing where we can, but there still comes a shortfall. There's twenty thousand dollars that was in the salary reserve account. That would need to be. Appropriated as well too, if I understand the system properly, as well as the additional flexible thirty thousand dollars to cover the shortfall.
That's right, Mr. Chairman, the salary reserve component of this will also be at the special town meeting during the colas. As all other salary transfers from the reserve accounts are done for the special.
Do you happen to know off the top of your head what's left in the reserve account, the finance committee? Approximately?
I don't think it's. It's still over a hundred, if that's what you're asking me. The original contribution was one sixty three.
Right.
So there are sufficient funds for that. If they choose to do that, or if they decide they want to add that to the special, we can do that too when we meet with them. Next week during the reconciliation meeting.
Right. I'm just wondering because of the. Great number of articles we already have, and now we're adding more articles to the special. If it wouldn't be more prudent to ask the finance committee to take this out of the reserve transfer. To address it immediately.
Well, it's it's essentially still part of one. Financial salary article. It's just a line item within the overall salary transfer line item. It's not a separate standalone article.
Okay. Gentlemen, thoughts?
But you can wait till you meet with the FinCom next week and decide on that.
And throw it out to them because we don't have any problem for the next two weeks, right?
Yeah, you got enough money now.
I think we're okay to wait until we can gather with the finance committee and strategize on how to.
Okay.
How to cover it because it's more than one way to skin this cat.
Right, right. Alright, Rich, we're gonna attempt to get your money one way or another. How's that? Because we understand the situation. Going to the paramedic level, we knew it was gonna be costly. But it's providing a very necessary service.
Exactly, and and. We have done a lot of things in the last couple of years, and it has been monumental.
Right.
This is one of those things that even the best forecasts probably couldn't nail it down as closely as we wanted it to. And so now we know what we're looking at.
Correct.
Correct, okay. Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And while we're doing chiefs. We have Chief Landis of the Southwood Police Department here next up, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the what I'm looking for is the approval to keep. One of our older cruisers that's coming that just came offline. It's one of the older models. So the body style being what it is, all the components in it can't transfer over into any of the new equipment since Ford changed their. The style, so the goal is because right now, pretty much all of our vendors for outside details are requesting cruisers. We do have the traffic control officers, but they cannot drive a marked police unit. So what this does, it gives us another vehicle to use for road, road jobs, road closures. For like we had the storm there a couple of weeks ago where we had all our assets here. And every piece of equipment's out on the road. So this also allows. From taking our line cars. Out onto road details where it gives us another avenue to use one of the older model cars. Where I'm working with Carl to establish a fund. A fund that hopefully will help support. You know, the oil changes in the minor, you know, repair to keep to keep this vehicle up. And the fact that now with the with the energy deal that the town is looking at. And the improvement in vehicles in the future, these are no longer would become an asset into the department. So into another department because you need just different requirements. So what you would get out of it at an auction, I think we could probably do just as well, if not better, by maintaining it ourselves at limited cost.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you you. You do have a warrant article listing for a potential revolving account that the chief is referring to. So that we could have that in place and be authorized according to the advice of our outside auditor.
Right, and just just for clarification, we do charge that's for that vehicle.
What this is.
And that money would go into the revolving account. I just wanted people to understand that 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 is a detail. Rate.
Yes.
Okay. So. Well, I think it's a great idea.
I know that's a fact.
Right, and I think it's a lot safer for people out there in details to have have that vehicle there with the lights on. It protects people. We've seen far too many things that we've read far too many. Articles. Well, you just had one in Westfield. You know, so I don't have any problem with it.
No, I think when we have, you know, an issue in town like a widespread storm. You know, we had last year and the years before, we had officers out in their own personal vehicles at. Closure, waiting for ever source to get there or something like that, and. This will just give you another vehicle to have to put on the road in a pinch, but for the and also keep the line cars for. Day to day use, and this will be used for the details and having the revenue stream go into the revolving. I think it's a it's a win win, and the fact is you brought it up. With the green energy program, we're no longer allowed to repurpose cruisers, so they're just going to the auction. You don't, you know. This will be a good, a good use of that vehicle.
Win win.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Why are you right here?
Yes.
We'll take this out of order that you sent us a letter. The good High Sheriff is. Once again offered use of his manpower. To help patrol the lakes. And you're requesting that we appoint twenty one people as. Police, Southwood Police Reserve Officer. For the purpose of enforcing chapter ninety B, section twelve regulation.
Correct, so this is solely on the lake, no powers outside of that. This gives them the ability to write on our town bylaws. So they can enforce some of our reporting regulations that are out there. Under the current legislation, sheriffs aren't allowed to enforce that or write the tickets or draft on them. So this will at least for time, time being, there the sheriff is working on that end of it himself. But until that happens, it gives us some manpower to fill our voids that we have on the lake. And. They then, you know, they've been really good, and then the community has been very receptive to them out there. They're out there to teach. And enforce than it is actually, you know, the main goal is educating. But they will have to enforce the law, they have to.
Okay, I'm not gonna read off all twenty one names of the men and women on this list. So I'm just gonna ask for a motion to approve the recommendation of the police chief. Of appointing these twenty one sheriff. Sheriff deputies, sheriff deputies. As Southwood Police Reserve Officers for the purpose of enforcing chapter ninety B, section twelve regulations. While assisting with lake enforcement. Per the memorandum of understanding between the Haddon County Sheriff's Office and the town of Southwick.
Doug Moglen, so moved.
Jason Perron, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, thank you. You got it. Mr. McMahon, we have everybody here today, the chairman of the Economic Development Commission. Come on up.
Mr. Chairman, before we take Michael, going back to the earlier one on the cruiser. You were explaining how it was a win winner, Mr. Moglen did, but we didn't actually do a vote.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Steinhardt. I need a motion. To what? To approve.
The retaining of the old cruiser into the fleet.
Subject to the town meeting, accepting the revolving or just just retaining the old cruiser?
Retaining the old cruiser.
Retain the old cruiser.
Second to motion.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Steinhardt. Okay, now we have the chairman of the Economic Development Commission, Mike McMahon here. Mr. McMahon, you want to start on E D C website?
Yeah, over the last couple of years, we've had more public input. That they want more things on there and they want updated. For the last twelve or fifteen years, we've had an informal. Website, but they want stuff updated more. They want us to go out, get a vendor, pay the vendor to develop a website. Update the website, etc. That was what was included in the budget proposal. And if you look at surrounding towns. In Connecticut or Massachusetts, websites are getting more sophisticated. And as you mentioned at the budget hearing, the town is thinking of doing some new stuff. With the town website over the next couple of years.
Absolutely, changing technology. Mr. Moban, you're a technology expert.
Guys are in big trouble. No, I mean, I have no objection. I know we. There's Carl, there's Carl.
Yes.
We've been working on one thing we haven't really talked about, but we are going to be moving our domain. Sooner than later to a dot gov domain, which will give us, makes it identifiable as an official government website. Our current website is not. I get them confused. Dot net is email and dot org is.
Web page.
Right, right, so we're gonna move everything to dot gov. And so your email will coincide with the website, which is proper, and then we'll be able to have subdomains under that. To support some of these other endeavors that we've done, like we did Southwood twenty forty dot com. There's a couple other groups that have.
The police department.
Police Department, the Fire Department, there's a couple boards and commissions. Ag Commission. Are they coming in there on the agenda for either tonight or next meeting? To talk about the same thing, so it's gonna be beneficial, but no objection, and we've got to go through the budget process here. Those guys have chosen to do it a little differently, I think. I don't think they don't have a big budget in there. They don't have a budget in their budget for the website part of their deal, but understand where you're coming from. And you know, you made a compelling argument at the budget hearing, so we'll see where that goes, but.
Mr. Vice Chairman, is that something you would want to wait till the dot gov approval? Process that we're going through is finished before Mike then activates it with our vendor?
We can talk offline, Carl, just to see where the progress of that is.
Okay.
Maybe because there's a larger project behind that, that's.
That's true.
I wouldn't. I wouldn't ask anyone to wait for that project to be done. Because we may be all citizens of the southern end of the town by then, but.
You started about Seabird's pasture.
Yeah. Well, I am the youngest. No, I don't maybe you're not that part of this. No, 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 this one's taken so long, Jason, it's a safe bet. But no, so.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, wouldn't have it slow you down, even if you have to move it. Once it started.
Okay.
What about nine dollars for the domain registration? It's not a challenge, so. That being said, the only, the only, we have a policy. It's part of social media policy, but for all boards and commissions. An employee of the town, non-elected, so right now that's Jim Middleton.
Yep.
Has to have the credentials to the website. That's just for boards change, people's change, and he needs to have basically the master key. To be able to allow people to do stuff on said website or reassign it as necessary. And it takes all, everything out of it, it just gives it, gives it in control of the town. And I'll be glad if you want to reach out to me or have somebody reach out to me. I can arrange a meeting with Jim. And or, you know, whatever, whatever assistance you have. And the budget's the budget that's going through that process right now, but on the technical piece of it, just let me know.
Right, okay.
Alright, let's have a motion to approve that we're gonna go forward with this.
So moved.
Second, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Alright, hey, everybody's getting what they want tonight.
I don't know, who's next?
I don't know.
Alright, we're due to take one down. Let's go. Who's next?
I don't want to be next. Is Randy on the line?
To be next.
Is Randy on the line or? No?
I don't think I want to be after Mr. Morgan's comments.
Well, this one's a good one too. This is a meeting. I first picked up the folder and I'm like, oh my God, we're not getting out till tomorrow, but then I realized that there were a lot of multi-page things in here.
Yeah. Randy, we're talking about the grant agreement with Mass Development Finance Agency. For a hundred and thirty four thousand, five hundred. For design and permitting the Hudson Drive to Sam West Road Loop Connector by Fussin' O'Neil. Go ahead.
Yeah, we've talked about this many times now. So what you have in front of you was a grant agreement between Mass Development and the town. We actually got notice of this award, I want to say it was last fall, and it just took a while before the state agency got the contracts together. So what you have before you is that contract agreement, and then once that gets signed. And we will get a contract with our with our consultant and they can start that work.
Okay, so this, Mr. Chairman, this is something that goes back, this has been in front of the planning board. It was a kind of a. A long ranging thing, and it's actually been in front of master plan. They're aware of it. This will be of great benefit to the town. Especially in the industrial park as those, the mining operations conclude over there to be able to take Hudson Drive and connect it. Through Sam West. And then take that traffic off, pressure off the center of town. Done correctly, this will be a huge benefit to the town, so I'll gladly make a motion to. Award or execute this agreement with Mass Development.
You second.
I have no problem seconding that motion.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Hold the phone. Randy, thank you for all your hard work doing this.
Thank you.
Is it just the chair?
I amend the motion for the chair to sign.
Okay.
Go ahead and sign.
Okay.
Better you than me.
Getting a little nervous standing as the owner all the time. Alright. Okay. Next thing up is the proclamation I talked about last week for. National Donate Life and Autism Awareness Month, so. And thanking Nadine, this is great. Town of Southwood proclamation, whereas the town of Southwick is guided by the principles of inclusivity. And and its commitment to help improve the lives of all individuals in the diverse community we serve. And whereas autism is a complex disorder that affects each person differently. Can cause challenges with verbal and nonverbal communication. Social interaction, repetitive behaviors, and it can affect anyone regardless of age, race, ethnicity. Gender, socioeconomic background, and. Whereas autism prevents varying qualities, strengths, and challenges for individuals. Within the autism spectrum disorder, A S D community. And whereas the town of Southwood is committed to providing equitable access to services, events, and activities that support self-determination. With the A S D community, and whereas the town of Southwood seeks to create a socially conscious community. That values and celebrates the unique individuals within the A S D community, which celebrates all kinds of minds. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the town of Southwood that the month of April is designated as Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month. By its select board, Russell S. Fox, Chairman Doug Moglen, Vice Chairman Jason Perron. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
That's the other one.
And I don't have a copy of the other one.
Good, because I only, I have a copy of that one. I'm not sure where we were going there.
Alright. You could sign now and please, Jason.
Yeah, this is the second.
Okay. Okay, and the next proclamation is concerning National Donate Life Month. Town of Southwick, whereas realizing an urgent need for donors around the country. The National Donate Life Month observance was established in two thousand and three. To promote a greater understanding of the life-saving benefits of donation. And whereas National Donate Life Blue and Green Day is celebrated each April. Represents the national effort to raise awareness for organ and tissue donation and transplantation. And whereas the transplantation of organs and tissues is made possible through the compassion of organ and tissue donors. Enabling gifted surgeons to not only save thousands of lives every year, but also to restore health and sight to the recipients. And. Whereas people of all ages, ethnic backgrounds, and religions need organ transplants. And whereas the town of Southwood supports the vital efforts to learn about donating tissue and organs, registering as an organ and tissue donor. And willingness to give the precious gifts of health, sight. And life to people in need, and whereas the town of Southwood recognizes. National Donate Life Month and National Blue and Green Day as a great opportunity to join in the fight to save lives. Therefore, be proclaimed by the town of Southwood the month of April is designated Donate Life Month. By its select board, Russell S. Fox, Chairman Doug Moglen, Vice Chairman Jason Perron, Clark. Need a motion?
Doug Moglen, so moved.
Jason Perron will second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
And if you notice outside. The donate life flag is flying underneath the American flag. And the blue lights have been placed outside that'll shine on the front of town hall. For the morning, awesome. Thank you, gentlemen, for that. Alright, we're moving on to new business. And under here, Carl, we have special town meeting and annual town meeting articles. You want to go into that?
Sure, yes, Mr. Chairman, I mean, obviously, the thing you have in front of you, the first item is a. Sure. Yes, Mr. Chairman. I mean, obviously, the thing you have in front of you, the first item is a. Uh, a draft special town meeting article um agenda. And of course, that's just the example format. That's not the items that have been computed by the town accountant yet for the transfers. And the salaries um issues related to different MOAs and agreements and so forth. So that'll still be forthcoming. It may also include the information that you're dealing with on the fire department salary transfer for that overtime issue. It'll handle the snow and ice deficit. Last year, we had a deal with a few things with the CARES Act. We don't need to do that. Um. There'll be the annual OPEB vote, which is the uh transfer to the other post-employment benefit trust fund. So that, again, that's a. A standard one. And then depending upon what decisions you will make with the finance committee. Next week on the budget process. Um, last year you did move a few items up. To the special because you wanted to go and acquire them sooner, which included the ambulance replacement, that mower. The police boat and the fire department equipment. And then you also moved up money for um. Paving. So again, those are just examples. That are on those uh these first two sheets and we'll have to see what the um. What we end up doing uh with those after next week's meeting. Are there any questions on that?
No, sir.
This is a new process. Jason, you have any questions on that issue?
No, I think trying to read through everything. But I do, I will let you know.
All right, and then we go into. Um, many of the different issues that relate to what would be on the um annual town meeting warrant. Which um you have those items here now in front of you. And um. Let's see, one of them is. Uh, the housekeeping issue. Uh, let's see, Westfield IMA dispatch funds, that would probably be back under the special. You have the standardized articles for the election, which will have already happened because that was called under a different warrant. The town report, the appointment of minor officers, selling and trading obsolete equipment. Applying and accepting grants. So all of those are generally handled as like a consent agenda. Uh, the way that town council works those. So any issues on those uh particular articles?
No, those are housekeeping articles.
Yes.
Yeah.
Standard boilerplate.
Correct.
Um, and then the next one would be if there's a decision. For anything related to a borrowing, we usually have those. Uh, so it, it really depends upon what items that are in the budget right now. That you um would end up approving that would necessitate a borrowing. And that would, you know, could be something like the paving. Or um, you know, the dump truck that's also on the list. So those two things would lend themselves to potential borrowing articles. And then we go on to the actual finance committee's article, which is the annual budget. And that's when people have referred to the um. The, that little handbook that they get with the different colored paper. And each year they choose certain color. And then there's the reauthorizing the Department of Revolving Accounts. Now, this also relates to the article that the police chief was talking about for. A cruiser revolving account. And we would still probably end up doing a standalone ward article for its original authorization. And then in the subsequent years, it would be rolled onto this revolving one. And if you look at the revolving one, you'll see all sorts of different um. Um, types of funds from inspectors and hazmat. Boat ramps, local permitting, custodial. Uh, council on aging classes and revolving sidewalk revolving. House numbering, wetland applications. So you can see all of those already exist. And are reauthorized every year according to. The latest Massachusetts general laws in Massachusetts Department of Revenue Regulations and Guidance. Any questions on those?
No, we seem to add one each year. So it's become a commonplace.
Yep. So there's that. And then, of course, the next ones would be the um. Your Community Preservation Committee Budget. The first one being the uh, you know, reservation of funding with the different categories. Um, the operating expense of five percent. And then a series of different projects. Um, but most importantly, we have the third year of the alum treatment debt service. So that has to be on there because that was already authorized by a vote at town meeting. I believe it was our, our March um town meeting in the middle of winter where we held it in the high school parking lot.
Correct.
And the reason being, we had to get the authorization so that we could do the treatment in April. So you have that one. Um, from them and then, you know, all the other articles that, that they had already voted on that are in there. You have those ones to deal with. Those came through from Sabrina. Um, Wally Park. Bray Park. The Morehouse Repair. Let's see. Housing Authority allotment for the Southwick Housing Authority at Depot Street. And again, a lot of these Chris mentioned at his budget meeting a few weeks ago with you.
Right, the big one is trees at the old cemetery.
Right, restoration of the bronze memorial plaque. So you have a good number of articles. You probably got seven, eight articles from CPC.
Right.
The, the uh repair of the slate roof in Coolville at the police department.
That's true.
So. You know, you, I'm looking at like one, three, four, five, six, the other one, the debt service, seven, the other two authors. Looking at nine articles at least for CPC.
Right.
So I think we're going to be up near thirty articles.
I, I don't doubt that at all, just looking at the list.
So does anybody have any? Questions on those?
Uh, nobody's, no, no questions, Carl.
Okay. And then, of course, we have uh. The municipal aggregation vote for electricity. Um, you guys had voted a few weeks ago for that. The medical, um, let's see, the non-medical marijuana retail cell one. Municipal light plant. Article. Uh, the two citizen petitions. And you got six or seven zoning articles. You've got seven seventy-one. Zoning, you got a road acceptance for sawgrass. Sewer inter-municipal agreement has to be renewed. I gave you a copy of the original. December twelfth nineteen ninety-five vote that authorized the current. IMA that's going to be expiring. So that's why uh we're in the final process. We have a, a, I believe, a meeting in the next week or two. With the city of Westfield on that issue. Um. See, short-term rental, residential common driveways. Off-street parking and loading, estate lots. So you got those other zoning ones. And those all came through Mr. Goddard in working with Mark Beglane. You got uh the school assessment vote. In the school capital borrowing vote, will you vote not to disapprove? Is that double negative wording under the statute?
Correct.
Uh, let's see. You got the chiefs revolving for the cruiser. We have um the veterans work-off program where we, I did confirm that. With DOR that that's a town meeting vote. So you have that. Um, we have a draft. Copy of a special act. Town meeting warrant article for the splitting of the town clerk treasure collector positions. The one that Darefield just did recently. Last fall, so ours would be sort of modeled after that. They repealed a nineteen seventy-two special act and we're going to be repealing, I believe, in nineteen seventy-one. Okay, and then. You had Mr. Thoreau in along with our veterans rep. Last meeting and we discussed the issue of um. The veterans real estate tax exempt. So that's going to be a warrant article for. Chapter fifty-nine. Section five N. And then the opioids, I was in contact with DOR. And they said if we want to wait for the revolving fund. Language that was not in the governor's recent approved supplemental budget. That we could, that we don't have to create a special stabilization fund and that the settlement amounts. Can just be closed out to the June thirtieth free cash. And, you know, until there is a mechanism in place that's easier to use. So you're going to have to think about what your pleasure is on that. Do you want, want, want to actually create a. Stabilization account for that issue? And then when the other thing comes along, look to uh revoke it. Or do you want to just leave the issue alone for now? So that's an important thing I'll need to know from you because that tells me whether there's going to be a warrant article on the. On.
Well, why don't we try to tackle that right now and get it off your plate? I think we should just wait.
Seems reasonable.
Right. All right, we took that off the table.
Okay, because again, I, I did get guidance from the DOR rep uh as of today on that.
Okay.
So that's um. I think that's all I have for now. I mean, obviously, depending upon the, you know, I, I've.
More, more.
I've asked, I've asked town council to determine. From a town attorney point of view, whether or not there's any additional. Pieces of legislation or actions we need to take. Uh, you know, a town meeting in that uh e- either him, Ben or Ken, if they feel like that needs to be. Anything that needs to be acted on to hear from them. But uh, obviously, now that I have all of these. Documents that we've just gone over, which is very piecemeal and all loosely collected. I'm ready to um coordinate the development of, of an initial draft with the town attorney unless there are any reservations by the three of you.
I would just have the school prepare for two nights.
Most of our better. Third shift will be directing traffic out of the school.
Better take the night off. Is that what I hear?
I think you'll be just about on time for work.
This is true. Yeah, maybe not.
All right, so you, uh, the three of you are okay with me sending that stuff to Benjamin and coordinating it that with him?
Absolutely, sir.
Yep.
Okay.
Carl, have you heard from Ben this week?
Uh, no, I think I might have seen an email from him last week. But the week is young, Mr. Vice Jim.
Well, there's a couple of the warrant article things that I'd like to get some feedback on and. Um. I hadn't heard back then.
Yep.
And also that, that um, I'm going to cover one item under. I guess it's. Old business.
All right, Carl, any other new business from you?
Uh, no, that's it.
Okay. I got a couple of things. Number one, we'll be having our um budget meeting Wednesday at five thirty in this room. Uh, so be prepared for that one. The finance committee has already met and. Had their preliminary and then we'll meet jointly with them the following week. Uh, the second thing I have is uh. They're going to be staging for the roof, correct? For the roof here at town hall?
Yeah, they, they, they're going to be starting to mobilize. So uh, the different departments. Are having a um coordination meeting with the clerk of the works and facilities. And grounds to deal with, you know, council on aging related uh access issues. Uh, issues related to the town clerk's office and access. So those coordination. Uh, efforts are underway.
Okay.
So in, in fact, part of the um. Part of the HVAC project is going to necessitate moving. The council on aging operations down to the community center for one or two weeks. So that is something that. Um, Cindy and her staff are going to be working with David and his staff in the clerk of the works on.
Okay, but once, once they have this meeting, I think we should probably uh. Get some press on this and let the public uh be aware what's going on. Um, I mean, I'm sure the town clerk will emphasize that there's a lot of things that people can do online.
Yeah.
Rather than come to the building. Uh, I'm sure our council on aging director is going to wo- look out for the safety of our seniors. Uh, but anybody else that needs access to the building, I know a building inspector. Well, he uh emphasizes that everybody can do most everything online too. So I think we need to promote that, Carl.
Yep.
All right, uh, the other thing I had was. I had informal conversations with the chairman of the school committee and I know he reached out to our police chief. And um. And uh, what I'm gonna talk about tonight is uh, we knew that we'd be preparing a grant. But uh. Based on what happened in uh. Uh, Tennessee and some of the other things that have been happening around our, our, our country. Um, we started kicking out the idea of another resource officer. So that we would have two rather than one. And uh, I think it's a great idea. Um, so I, I, I'm kind of looking for support for this board. Uh, Mr. Stevenson is going to go back to his committee to get a letter of support for it. Um, you know, it all depends on the grant funding. Um, Bob, do you want to add anything?
Just that we, while we're waiting to hear, we started the process beginning of May one deadline. So um, three to five thirty-four. Um, unfortunately didn't get it. Um. Fun, light of everything and more money is available. Things couldn't get for this time around. So it's certainly a great avenue. Um. As you know, the school resource officer currently is fully funded through the police department to the salary item. And the top would be, we would look for other ways of financing by um. We get the other regional um meetings involved too. So. We'll see.
All right. And uh. I think I've already told you guys that we meet quarterly, the school, fire, police uh. Uh, have a quarterly meeting uh about the safety of students and faculty and. Um, and uh, also going to be forming another group, smaller group that's going to be meeting monthly.
So they started and just going with policies and just making sure that we're up to date and current with everything that everyone's.
Okay, so. Gentlemen, I, I kind of like to ask for a motion to support uh this grant application and, and looking at another resource officer.
I'd like to be able to vote twice. I'll make the motion.
Definitely support that.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Crone, aye.
Carl, if you could draft up a letter with Nadine. You know?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh. That's the last I had under new business. Mr. Mop, a new business.
Uh, new business is that the governor, Maury Haley, did sign the extension to hybrid meetings through March thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. And um, they did make it a calamity corner by waiting until. The twenty-ninth, well after meetings would have, had to have been posted for public hearings and such uh in hybrid. So. There were some meetings that were published as in-person only for members, but um. Someday the governor and the house and the senate will get their act together and make this permanent, but uh glad to see that that continued. Um. So that, I think that's a huge benefit for people of Southwick that want to join into meetings and also for board members. If they're traveling on business or out of town. They're able to join and be productive members of their respective boards and commissions.
Right, you have that document in your mail folder as the entire supplemental um act.
Oh yeah, they can also do uh to-go drinks from bars until uh, right, March thirty-first, six twenty-four. There's some other stuff and money and stuff too. Those are the two islands. Uh, glad to see it finally move.
Yeah.
Anything else, Doc?
No, uh. I have one. Um, I'm still waiting. This has been ongoing, but I figure I should get it out in front. I've talked to the chairman of the ag com. Um, I started doing some research when I was listening to an ag com meeting of, it's probably a month and a half ago now. Um. Chairman Hanson was opining why conservation commission can't have associate members. And um, I said, gee, I don't know. I probably should look. So I looked and under mass general law, there's really not a provision for. The, the, the section of law we have adopted that formed the conservation commission doesn't have the ability to have associate members. However, some cities and towns in the Commonwealth. Do have associate members. In name, but they're not. They're not appointed members of the conservation commission. They're not voting members of the conservation commission. I promise to make this brief. But. What they do is they appoint them special tasks under the conservation commission and they report back to the conservation commission who then vote, makes any necessary votes. How does that do it ag? Well, I stumbled through the bylaw under the state law. How does that have to do with ag? Well, I stumbled through the bylaw under the state law for ag. Ag really doesn't have that capability either. And it also is very clear as to the composition of the agricultural commission. We accepted the right to farm bylaw and created our ag commission. Two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Um. And we have seven members and. Or so many members plus up to five associates, that's twelve. I think that exceeds the number under the law for. Under the state law. For the composition of the agcom. So I reached out to the chairman because there was a request put to this board to to make some appointments and changes to. To that board based on some resignations and everything else. Out of an abundance of caution, I reached out to council and had him start researching what's what. He, I'm still waiting on council to come back, so I I have conferred with. Chairman Hanson to let him know that, hey, we're not dragging our feet on your request for these appointments. I want to just do them under the law and make sure that we've got everything correct. Um, fully understanding, fully in agreement, he's reached out to the members that were, that would be. That were in play for all of these changes that he was looking to make, we will have this resolved before. Um, appointment season next year or well, this year, June. Um, next fiscal year. But um, I just wanted to put it on the record that this has been going on and we've been uh, myself and. Um, town council, Carl's aware. Um, as to what's been going on, obviously I can't talk to you guys about it without violating the open meeting law, but so I just wanted to talk about it in a public meeting. That's where we're at with that. So I don't know what the the net net of it is, but. The most innocent of questions turned, took me down a rat hole looking at state law as to how these boards and commissions were. Created and how they're, how they're. Composed under the law, so that's what we're just taking a look at.
Right, well, thank you for doing that, Doug.
Yeah, and I I have an email from Bert, you know, he thanking me and he's appreciative of the effort here, of what's going on, so he's totally on board, so. Like I said, there was a couple of resignations and a couple of people that wanted to change from one. From a member to an associate, and I didn't want to make those changes and then have council come back and say, oh, by the way. And then we end up in a mess. Um. So hopefully we'll get that squared away sooner than later. And. Lastly, under new businesses, I will have be having a meeting next week with the library director. To review some of the technology stuff that came up during the budget hearings. Um, there was some commentary back and forth on that, so I want to. Have that discussion with her.
Good. Thank you. Jason, new business?
Nothing really, um, I the the meeting. Well, you guys were enjoying the pancake breakfast.
Did we say how good them pancakes were?
Yes, you did.
Did we mention the sausage and the whole?
They were good.
Um, it's talk, a lot of talk was about what you gentlemen spoke about was during breakfast. Uh, establishing the office of a rural uh, director. Um, the municipal building authority. Um, a lot of good stuff if it comes to fruition, um, you know, some of the interesting stuff. A lot of people like the, we don't have a lot of state-owned land, we're, and I don't know if we should say we're lucky. But the state-owned land that, I don't know if they went over that formula with that. Uh, just the. Interesting little tidbit. Um. The acre of. Uh, property value in uh, state-owned land in Suffolk County is worth like four thousand something dollars. Compared to uh, acre out here is about a hundred and twenty-five. So it just shows how.
One hundred and twenty-five American, right, dollars?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty-five cents.
Now you know why we're trying to band together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, and there's a lot of. Uh, I've talked to a few people, uh, you know, I definitely would like to see that. Come to fruition as well as the chapter ninety. You know, uh, is it a rep, Representative Pignatelli? Or is it Senator, no, Representative? Um, he's tried that formula and and I hope that works. There seems to be. At least some uh, willing to at the, at least at the governor's executive level to. To really talk about some change to the. Formula for chapter ninety, as we know, it's completely unfair and skewed. As well as the uh, the rural school. Designation and stuff like that, so it was a very, very informative meeting, uh, glad I went, even if I didn't get to get pancakes.
They didn't have pancakes at the breakfast, did you?
No, they had a bagged lunch and. Muffins and some fruit.
Jason, I I will, I already printed out one of those presentations, I'll print the other one out and I will put them in the full board's. Next mail folder, so that your board members will be able to see what was discussed.
Hey, thank you, Carl.
But other than that, I have nothing new to present other than that.
Okay. All right, then we're going to old business. Uh, North Pond, well, that's an ongoing thing. Uh, matter of fact, some of the issues were raised during the budget hearings of things that they need, so we'll have to. When we discuss the budget, we'll have to go into some detail about that. As Carl said, in the next couple of weeks, uh, we'll probably be uh. Having a, a meeting with the good mayor of Westfield. Uh, marijuana article is going to be on the uh, town meeting. Annual town meeting. Uh, seventy-four College Highway, I have not heard another word from any of the parties. Have you heard anything, Carl?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Did you see the news at Agom on the same topic? Which that the buyer for shape or. Supposed to buy that to be a uh. Cannabis grow and they were, they failed to put their financing together, so that. Facility is now heading for auction.
Right.
For a, a, a different.
Yeah, I I'm going to suggest to the board when it comes to seventy-four College Highway that we send a letter. Uh, and and check with the building inspector as far as dates, times, things like that. And uh, start, start the clock ticking because enough is enough.
Well, I I did actually check into that. They seemed to, both him and the town planner seemed to think they had done enough. For um, qualifying for the special permit still to be in effect, sir.
Okay.
So I I did look into that.
All right.
Yeah, because that issue came up last fall when you and I had been meeting with the other prospective buyer.
Correct.
Didn't we last week say there was like a drop dead date?
What did they do, Carl?
Right.
I think they moved some dirt around.
I mean, that's all it takes.
There's a couple cones out there.
Well. But there's a for sale thing.
Right, but I mean, I know. Under. Special permit, there's a lot of case law on that and you know, previous experience, literally, you just got to have a dozer down there and dig five feet of the accessway and. It stops the tolling of the special permit.
Right, I know that's what you would, you would use that term in previous meetings, Doug.
Some soil that was disturbed right at the end.
That, that would be all it would take, under the state law for.
Yeah.
Not a local bylaw, that's state law.
All right, we'll continue to carry it. Uh, speed limits on deer run, I talked to Lieutenant Banish, uh, do you have anything that you'd like to add, Chief?
Signs to come in.
Okay.
Those, we'll start some different kinds of enforcement as well.
Thank you. Uh, municipal aggregate for electricity, it's going to be a warrant article. So that. Select uh, board goals and objectives, anybody have anything they'd like to add or tonight? Okay. Um. Municipal Light Plant, we have that article on. So here's three that we had got articles on, uh, we're almost. Almost have a flag in banner policy, almost.
Yeah, that's gone to council the, after your uh, board inputs last week.
Okay.
So Nadine sent that to uh, town council to stop the review process as the board had directed.
Okay, do we want to keep the opioid uh, thing on here?
Uh, no, I think we can take that off because when the other, the other legislation finally comes forward, we'll. We'll bring that forward, but you know, we'll need to understand that. We may have to wait till another town meeting when that other option does come forward to. Bring that forward to get an approval, okay?
Okay, and uh, the open meeting law?
Yep, Doug already spoke to that issue and you've got that information in your mail folder.
You guys.
That can come off. I'm sorry, that can come off.
Right, so that can come off.
Yep.
All right. So that is everything under old business, Mr. Steinhardt, old business.
I, I just want to let you know, I will be having a meeting this week with the um. The CPA consultant that's helping us develop options for the town clerk treasure collector office. Splitting that office up and what the different options and configurations would look for. Staffing and so forth. Um, not sure when we'll get to. Activating that and programming those funds, but ultimately the first. Order of business is the town meeting article. That we need to get approved so that we can file the changes. With the uh, state legislature to modify the special act that's in in effect now.
Okay.
So Carl, so what you're saying is you need to have a town meeting authority. To ask our legislators for a special act.
Yes. Yep, because Doug, it was right in the, the position, uh, the office came into being by special act. And it will have to be either amended by special act or um, voted in a different way to come out of a special act.
Correct, and and, and that. Special act even predates yourself on the board. Uh, I, I'm an employee of the town, but um.
Yeah, I was, I was even young.
It came in that way, right, so special meeting, special town or a special town meeting or town meeting. Voted to ask for the act and then the, then they sent it to the.
Yeah, I, yeah, because as a general rule, I I I mean, I'd, I mean, I have a copy of the special act. As a general rule, we do not usually put things before the general court. Without a town meeting vote because that's what demonstrates to the general court the community support of that issue.
As a legislative body, I get it.
Yes.
It's almost like what we would do with a um. Like police officers when we ask to extend them. Beyond their mandatory retirement.
That is correct, and we've done a few of those before.
Same thing, right, got it, thank you.
So that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Mogan, oh, excuse me, I'd like to mention something on old business. I want to say what a great pancake breakfast we had last Saturday, and I think they raised four thousand, four thousand dollars. Uh, Sunday, Saturday, Saturday. And uh, they're going to the food pantry and I think uh, also want to thank uh, Chief Landis for his open house and uh. Fire Chief Sodanowitz for his open house, I mean, the kids just had a ball. Just had a ball and those pancakes were delicious and the sausage and the bacon and the hash browns.
They were, they're unbelievable, that real maple syrup. Yeah, from town too.
Not like it was a bagged one. But it was just a great event and thank you.
Yep.
Thank you and uh, thank. Mr. Mogan, old business.
Uh, I wanted to thank uh, Tiny Landscaping and um. Steve Presnell for donating the homemade maple syrup for the event because it was delicious. Not piling on, it really was good and you know, the, the, the police department and the fire department put on. Uh, an exemplary effort for the town to. For people to come in and see our full-time fire department. Um, and some of the, the stuff that they do and the equipment that they have that's available to, to serve the residents and the police department. To give tours of the station and kind of explain some of the stuff that they have and some of the stuff that they can use. Um, throughout the course of a year and you know, and a lot of the stuff that we, you know, God hope we never have to use, right, ever. Um, but some of the stuff that we have is is truly an asset and a benefit to the town. Um. I also, so that's the end of that. There was issues, it was a great day and you know, even with the weather, the weather was crappy, but there was a ton of people that came out. Ton of interest that the. Both departments, you know. Took to adversity really well and brought stuff inside that was supposed to be outside and it was great. Um. Even the lieutenant was smiling and giving tours, it was amazing. He's on, right?
Yes, he's on.
And. Text messaging coming in three, two. But um, I also participated in a coping with conflict mass municipal webinar that was on three twenty-eight, which was a pretty good um. Couple of good lessons from there. Um. And I covered the other thing on old business, the only thing, I don't know if it's relevant, but it was, it's relevant to the old business on the town meeting warrant. I did send a query to town council for the town meeting article regarding cannabis. The. Articles actually first, uh, chapter one thirty, section one. Um. I asked the town council if it would be advisable to delete the section rather than to change the wording from. Uh, not permitted to permitted. We don't have too much in our bylaw that we explicitly permit. Usually it's prohibited, so my suggestion is if it's going to go in front of town meeting, that the bylaw should just strike it. We put it in. To prohibit it. So if we're going to allow it, we just strike it and I'll let town council weigh in and send the article back. Um. I don't think it makes a hill of beans, it's just in the future, it's going to read funny that there's very few things that. You can do under the, under the law, there's stuff you can't. So I just think it reads better and would be more appropriate when someone reads it. Fifteen, twenty years in the future, if there's no law versus why does it say you can do it? And and or take alternate readings as to what it means. The other part of that to me is. We've had some, there's been other discussion with other boards and commissions just in general is. If someone, something, someone says, oh, I can do this, there's a bylaw says I can do it, well, there's the land use boards, Board of Health, there's Conservation Commission. Everyone has their own laws that they operate, I call them swim lanes, right? Well, just because if the selectmen say this is permitted, it does not give someone carte blanche. Rights to do something, they still have to follow any land use rules or Board of Health rules or whatever. So taking out of the selectmen's bylaw means, look, you don't probably have to come in front of the Board of Selectmen for this. But you, you know, it doesn't mean you don't have to come in front of one of those other things. Uh, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peron, old business.
None, that, you know, I actually appreciate Mr. Morgan's input on that because. You know, actually, if it's simpler to do it that way, then it's simpler to do it that way.
Yeah, same net effect, I'm not looking to change the outcome of any of it, it's just how that would read at, in the article and what it would do to the code book. After town meeting.
One of the things that has come up. Since I've now been a member's, well, this says I can do it, but you know, right, but then you have a zoning order.
Exactly.
Bylaw and, and then it's, you know, it causes aggravations and problems. So, yeah. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other old business, that's going to conclude our meeting, we are going to be going into executive session, not to reconvene. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, we're a budget hearing and then the following Monday. So we are going into executive session, a motion to go into executive session pursuant to mass sterile law. Chapter C thirty A, section twenty-one, two and three, chapter two fourteen, section one B, labor council litigation matters. And strategy for collective bargaining with police union, coalition, fire, I A F F, D P W. Non-union staff and clear clerk union, U P S E U. Executive session regarding national law, chapter C thirty A, section twenty-one. Two, three, and chapter two fourteen, section one B. Exception to move to go in executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel. And not to reconvene in open session, going exact since that contract negotiation, non-union personnel and not to reconvene. Uh. Declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargain position body and so not to reconvene in open session. Move to go into judge session, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and chair move to go in executive session. Conduct strategy sessions in preparation, negotiation with non-union personnel, not to reconvene. Move to go in executive session to discuss strategy, respect the litigation that the chair declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position. The body and not to reconvene in open session. Regarding chapter two fourteen, section one B, a person should have the right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference with their privacy. Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages. We'll call vote. Russ Fox, I.
Doug Morgan, I.
Jason Peron, I.
All right, and Robin, if you could turn that off, please, and. Thank you very much and.